I know who you mean. He writes really well.
Yeah.
No, I love reading. Well, yeah, it's funny because once I had to go out in Sears Court because they complained about the state dumping. Well, it was with some oil spill, oily, um, CD from my oil spill. So meeting with a couple of people that would complain about it. I brought him to attention. He said somebody complained about it. It's like this little fakeness. Probably, yeah. But anyway, but get down there. I don't know what's worse, dumping it here or torching it like they do down there.
Guys, does everybody have the package for tonight?
Well, I still don't have the insurance zoning application.
We got the application, but not.
So Nick has some information about the actual.
I can scan it. So I just sent the application by itself. And this is everything right here.
So it's two, not scalable, so not sendable.
Oh, okay. No, I found it. I found the cover sheet.
Okay, so when we get to this application, we'll, we can unfurl this and then.
Yeah, because that clock isn't accurate.
I just made a motion to replace the batteries.
So yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that happens. Community with the administrative staff. All right, so otherwise, everybody has the package that makes them kind of together. It's, you see, man, that's been, what were you gonna say?
No.
It was about set. So as soon as we work a little bit after seven, because that's our deck clock, seven oh two. So the first order of business to review the minutes from the sixteenth of February. Everybody all set? I won't participate in this because we're absent last night. But thank you very much for managing classes.
Glad to see your back.
Yeah, me too.
You struggled.
He got right out here quickly.
We did get up quick.
Yeah. Which is good.
So at the time, I forgot the first one, but I said the last time I did one of these things, it was very short too. But I also remember when it took like three hours to get through. I didn't want to cut people off. Anyway.
So here we are. Everybody's had a chance to review the minutes from the sixteenth of February. Is that right? What do we have more comments, edits, suggestions?
I have a couple, again, relatively minor things. Um, for new business, second paragraph, last sentence before the bullets. I would suggest changing date to tentative. And then on the third bullet, uh, it says, start checklist and findings of fact for the approved. I would suggest saying for the commercial development, review ordinance if approved. So because right now, we don't know if it's approved or if it's approved. So that's all I have.
Yep?
Um, I have a few things. The first paragraph that starts with first order of business, uh, last line, third line of that paragraph, last sentence, Roger made a, I would change, rather than motioned it, I would just change that to motion. Then, uh, under new business, number one, two thousand seventeen ordinance work, that first paragraph, second, um, second to last sentence, uh, second to last line, rather. The sentence that ends with signed ordinance. Let me read the whole sentence. So, yeah, so George said that, uh, what he took away from the meeting is that the select board want the planning board to continue doing what they planned to do before the signed ordinance was brought up and have Paul LaSard, Dennis Ketchell draft the signed ordinance. And the part that's missing and the planning board review and approve the ordinance. Which was the other part of the meeting.
Insert those words following the signed ordinance?
Yes, correct. Just add it to that sentence. Got that? And then, um, I'll, I'll give this to you, Nick. But there, there was a part of the meeting that didn't get captured. And that was the discussion about the need to get a legal opinion with regard to the first draft of the signed ordinance or, or the concept of having different standards within the same land use district. And so on the second page, uh, the first paragraph, uh, I would suggest the following. That second to last line, that the sentence that starts with George did, I would break that off as the start of a new paragraph. And then I would add the following language to that sentence to complete that paragraph. Mr. LaSard's first draft proposes different sign standards for different roads within the comprehensive plan. I'll, I'll give this to you, Nick. But I'll just read it for everybody to see if they think it's acceptable. Mr. LaSard's first draft proposes different sign standards for different roads within the comprehensive plan, village district. There may be a legal problem with this approach. George suggested the board seek legal advice from main municipal associations, legal department. The other board members agreed. George volunteered to write a first draft of an email for the board to review at its next meeting. Rich asked Nick to check with the town manager whether she needed to review and approve this request.
Sounds, sounds, it sounds like what we're saying.
And I wasn't here to.
No, you were. I know you weren't. I didn't mean to look at you.
And apparently she did get, get rid of it because in my email, it went from Carrie White. It mentioned right here about the response. Hopefully we get it back on the first of April. I don't think that will happen or we're asking for legal advice.
Was that, that was in an email that was what, like yesterday or something? Between the days will fly by. But I do remember seeing.
That's George's draft.
That's the draft. That's what we're going to discuss.
So we have suggested language for every permanent part of that. Any other comments about the minutes that we're reviewing at the moment?
No.
Roger, any, any family? So having submitted all that and some comments for currently the minutes of the sixteenth of February, I entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes of February sixteenth as amended.
Okay. In a second, okay. Any more discussion on this? Thank you all. All those in favor?
No, you put your hand up.
Okay, next. Thank you very much, George, for your. Coming up for the first draft on that. So Nick, we got that. So first up, under new business, we have Craig, um, sorry, Matthew C. Craig. Do you have an application for addition, division, and renovation? So where's it?
So it's an empty formula with an empty formula. One point five acres. The one one to align with it.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
On the application that says individual private campsite. Do you know, is there actually a, like an RV pad or something like that where, or?
There is, I don't believe there's a concrete pad on, on the property.
Well, do you have in addition to the residence, a permanent or a seasonal RV trailer on site? Or ten, it may be, the point is it may not need to be checked off, you know? The application indicates there's an individual private campsite as well.
Total unstructured too.
That is correct.
There's a guest cottage.
Correct.
A bunkhouse. But there's not, as far as I know, there's no RV.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, probably, I don't know if you have the authorization to modify the ordinance, but if there isn't one there, I'd suggest scratching it off and saying, um. Put your initials on it.
And just for the record, you are representing?
I was going to introduce myself. I'm sorry. Jill Edwards. I'm Jill Edwards. This here is Brad Hendrickson. And our client is Matt Craig. And Matt is down in Florida, so we're here to represent him. Okay.
Thank you for.
And he is the contractor. I did the design work. Okay. Just give you a heads up.
Pete, so you have a letter from the applicant stating that?
I do not. I can certainly get one.
That'd be a.
Sure. I, I will say Gary's been quite involved with the owner directly, as well as myself and Brad. But certainly we could, I could get that for you. Sure.
I was thinking the same thing, Pete, that standard practice would be a.
A letter.
Authorized on you to represent.
Sure.
And just to be clear on that, since we're, we are entertaining an application that has someone else's name, we're going to be very open about over authorizing or not.
Sure. Nick, continue? Sure. Um, okay, so what we've got here, he's been the property owner since two thousand. And as we had mentioned earlier, there's a couple of structures currently on the site. And he wanted to do some renovation work. And with that being said, he wanted to do some expansion if he could. So the goal was to remove some of the impervious area that's currently on the site and replace it with square footage. It'd be better if, uh, I could show you the site plan. But anyhow.
Is this?
It is. There's a whole set in there. It shows the existing structure, uh, the proposed structure, the site plan. If that's helpful for you. And you know, we have another set if you wanted to borrow it over here. I don't know if that's. Do you want to do that? Might be easier.
Well, this is. Do you have a.
That is correct.
On Long Pond?
On Long Pond.
Oh.
So right up. Just north of my property.
No, that's good. Did you hear that, Brad?
All right, so does everybody have a view of the site plan?
Yes.
Thanks, Jill.
Sure. Pictures tell a thousand words.
The gray is what?
This here.
It's existing.
Sure. This here is existing in the lighter gray.
Yeah.
This darker are the additions.
Okay.
Okay. These hidden lines here are the areas to be removed. And this here is the seventy-five foot setback. And so forth, and it goes back.
So it's only the seventy-five feet.
You read my mind. I wanted to get what distance we were at, to seventy-five.
Yes, in the hour mark.
The only part that's not is just barely a little bit in the corner.
Correct.
Proposed, and that's all proposed.
Correct.
Okay.
Within seventy-five feet, you limited to a thousand square feet or whatever was there when you started. And then twelve oh eight before. Right. Now, if this is removed, I'd say they could put the twelve oh eight here, you know, back for them. But in. Unless, my thinking here is unless this part here was this little corner is equal to two oh eight, four forty-two minus two oh eight, actually, and more square footage. It was seventy-five feet.
We are actually, if I may, I'm going to let my side there. Okay. Put my old lady glasses on. Okay, we've got a hundred and ninety-six square feet that's being removed here. We have thirty-nine that's being removed here. We have an add here of a hundred and seventy-six. Okay. Now I say this very, very literally, this total is a hundred and seventy-six. And this total here is sixty-five. And then I minus out anything outside of that seventy-five foot. So this total and this total equates exactly to the removal of this and this. And that's what we did. We maxed it out.
I think we'll need to see those calculations because that's what would be required elsewhere when we come across the same situation.
Sure. And if you look, if you're actually in here.
Oh, okay. If you got it right.
All the counts are right here.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Sure.
So it's very transparent?
It is. It is. And I put, if I may. What I've done here is we've, we've laid out basically existing proposed, existing proposed from right down through breaking it right out. So it was.
So if this and this total this and this.
Correct.
Why are we going from twelve oh eight to fourteen forty-two?
This here is building. This here is decks and stairs.
But that's existing and then proposed.
That is correct.
Okay.
So what, I think what we got here is you're saying that this plus whatever's being removed is equal to this. And the difference here is that one of them is only referring to, um, there's buildings versus stairs. Because, you know, when I first looked at this, I thought, gee, we're going from twelve oh eight to fourteen forty-two, but yet there's only a tiny bit.
Right.
Uh, beyond seventy-five feet. Where is this extra? I think it's because this calculation includes, well, stairs and not just the building or the deck and stuff like that. Do you, anybody else?
My thinking, maybe I'm wrong, was that the application proposed structure number or numbers reflect what you just said. So after you did, after removal of said deck area and stairs and having, if approved, to have, um, had this on and this on, then the number within seventy-five feet, so there would be a total less this and this, would give us what you two guys are.
And if I may add as well, I actually spoke with Gary about the definition of the floor area versus a footprint area. And I would like to be clear, there is obviously a proposed add under the proposed structure of approximately two hundred and something square feet. And that is because this was based on building, not deck.
Oh, for four of the proposed structure.
So that's why you're seeing an add here.
See, what's confusing us, I think, is as far as we're concerned, a structure is a structure. Doesn't matter if it's a building, a deck, stairs, it's all a structure.
Okay.
And so it's all that square footage that counts.
Right. And it sounds like what you probably did, rightfully so, was to go by definitions and then do the posts.
Correct. Now, again, this application does not match directly to this, only because this includes the deck for existing.
The deck that's in front here?
Correct. And also on the side.
All right, the drawings in the application are going to have to be consistent.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, in the end.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly alter them.
Because otherwise, a year from now, we're, we'll have no idea what we approved.
Sure. Like, I'm not, it's just looking at some simple figures here. I ran it through it, couldn't be fourteen forty-three, fourteen forty-two.
So Craig, are things adding, are they jiving with your calculator?
Yeah, because I'm gonna add the three twenty-seven. Seventeen seventy. So what is the total existing impervious area, eighteen ninety-nine? That's included in the bunkhouse and stuff too? No, bunkhouse is beyond that.
Yeah. We left, I left.
What's this number?
This right here, this total, is for this.
So that's include this and the additions?
That would count as.
Yes, based on existing.
Nothing's changing.
Uh, what was there, what's there currently. And then for the proposed building, what we are adding to.
Yes, specific numbers.
And then it was broken out for the decks and stairs, what was existing.
That would be helpful.
And now what is proposed.
This was going to be, but it isn't.
So basically what happens is.
That's what I'm saying. We would add this.
Add more.
Do you?
So how do you, what's the, what's six ninety-one?
That was the existing, which, which the three twenty-seven, one ninety-six.
See, that's where you're getting, you're confused. You don't want to be doing that. Because you don't want to add this, this.
Let's do this, just to show you what we do.
I did not.
Well, that's the eighteen ninety-nine.
That's for a total down the row, but it's all broken out for building, for deck.
Be added.
Existing and proposed.
To be deleted.
Existing and proposed.
So we add up.
To be added.
Add up these here, right? No, that's still the right. Because you're getting too much, too big of a number here.
You've got a proposed of fourteen.
Okay.
Fourteen forty-two.
Be added within seventy-five feet.
It didn't get out of drop because it says it's existing.
And then you're gonna add the four fifty-seven to the deck. And that should give you a total between.
Three two ninety-nine, that's where it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to make sure we know this is existing.
You guys see this? I'm just gonna show Jill an example if she could.
So it's kind of hard to read.
Yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, square footage.
Jill has the specific, you have the specific numbers and bunches of these?
I do. I do, actually. Would you like me to write it right on there?
I think Pete's got something for you right here.
However it works for you.
Just an example of something that you, that you lay out and say, you know, what was to be added to square footage, you're gonna list those things. To be removed, you know, whatever the net is.
Okay. So this here does not qualify under your standards, is that what you're saying?
No, it's all.
It's just not clear.
I would say.
Or at least not clear to us, showing.
So you want what's going to be added more than. Yeah. No, no problem.
Like.
Within seventy-five feet.
May I ask, um, when you're looking for an add in a removed, is that a total? Are you looking for a total add in a total removed?
Itemized, so that we know that proposed, the deck that's going to be removed, you have that here, but we don't know how much is being added on this addition to the north and this addition to the southeast.
Okay. So, um.
Within seventy-five.
Within the seventy-five feet.
Proposed donors add to that square footage? Proposed donor, proposed donor. So they're adding up to the green part too.
In terms of.
Not the footprint.
Yeah.
Yes, on the second floor. Yes.
It's not, it's not a square footage.
Yeah.
It's a good, it's a good recognition of a change, but it won't alter our square footage decision or calculation. Handsome design.
The, can we pull it back to that? Does there are any changes to, uh, let's see. Oh, this is a, never mind.
Yeah, the, no, no extra gravel, no, no additional. He said if anything, he would take some away. He doesn't, you know, he doesn't need that big of a.
And I seen where the deck is being removed underneath it is now gravel or something.
It's veget, it's, you know, rocky and vegetation, it's blueberry, it's just.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah. I think, yeah, they.
So what's our, it becomes vegetation.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Zero now. That is correct.
So, um, we'll have this as part of the application.
Sure. And I will also, is this something that I can email to you? The application, once I modify it, I know that I need to modify the floor area to include the deck. Is that something that can be emailed, or?
Yeah.
Is that? Okay procedure?
I'll email it.
Sure.
And who, P O L E?
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, what we have here, there are some figures, what is to be added was two hundred and thirty-five square feet. What is to be removed is two hundred and thirty-five square feet, net is zero.
Yeah.
We'll carry on, we don't get, I'm not.
No, that's fine.
This will be part of the application.
Go ahead, if you're still on square footage.
No, I was, I was just suggesting that perhaps if you know the square footage of these two additions, which I think you do, where you wanna be able to perform those calculations.
Right.
That maybe.
You'd like to see them there.
Write those square footages on the application here.
On the drawings.
Sure.
Uh, and initial it to amend that, that'll.
Make it more clear for you folks, sure.
Yeah, right, and anybody looking at this in the future.
Sure.
Whether it's Gary or a neighbor wanting to know what we approved.
Right.
Um. Moving on from the square footage stuff, I see you have a soil erosion control plan, because there is gonna be excavation work. Are you a main, a main D E P certified contractor? Will need on the application your license number?
There is one on there, there's supposed to be one on there.
Yeah.
It is not mine, but.
He might want it. Seth McGee?
Add it to the original.
Okay, and I'm handing that to Seth McGee, who'd be the contractor, the earth contractor.
Who's got the original?
Oh, I'm sorry. Seth McGee, and his number is zero zero three.
The other question is, not that we typically see this, because we get, because we don't, but is there also a stormwater management plan associated with this?
No.
Okay, how we typically handle that is we'll approve it with a condition that you have to meet D E P's best management practices for handling stormwater, so.
There is down on the detail, if you look at the detail on the site plan, there is, yeah.
On my notes.
Are they on the notes here?
Are they looking, you're looking for something more particular, no?
Yeah, self-defense.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, no, I'm talking stormwater, not soil erosion control.
Right, right.
Now, this is all soil erosion control.
That is correct.
Yeah, I'm talking stormwater runoff.
Not for stormwater.
Yeah, um, the, in terms of phosphorus.
Right, I'm not sure where, um, I shouldn't speak, I thought.
Please do.
That, that's okay, because those best management practices are just that. And so, you know, there are things like avoiding using gutters and using gravel along the edges for infiltration. Or rain gardens or whatever. Now, we only have jurisdiction over the addition, not the existing structure, so it only applies to that. Obviously, you know, you know, water quality in long pond is going downhill pretty quickly. And so we would encourage you to do it for the entire structure, but in terms of our jurisdiction, it only applies to the addition. So that's, that, you know, that, those are the options, the infiltration around the rain gardens.
Sure.
You know, other diversion of stormwater off into the woods, you have a fair amount of wood, it's still wooded down there with holders the size of BMWs. Just a lot of options.
That fairly flat land?
It is, um, yeah, and he, he really, this gravel area, he said it more than once to me that he does not need that big of an area. He has no problem bringing that back, allowing that area back to vegetation. He doesn't, it was there when he bought it, and you can turn a tractor trailer truck around down there. I mean, it's not really, but it's, it's way bigger than he needs.
Yeah.
And he has mentioned that, he actually has a note here.
We can't make them, but.
Yeah, we, yeah, you know, it's just the, it's the additions that we have some jurisdiction over under this application.
Yeah.
But every little bit helps.
He definitely is sensitive to what's going on down there.
I mean, this is on the south basin, the north basin is the one that's in oxic, but.
Yeah, he, he, yeah. He's concerned, he's not just, this isn't about him, it's.
So where about the long pond is this now?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go from the village.
From the village, um, the hot dog stand on the corner at the, after the golf course on the intersection, at the intersection, what's that, forty one, no.
It's Castle Island Road and West Road.
Castle Island Road, continue, continue south past that on, what's that road?
West Road.
It's West Road, just shortly up there, a little bit on the right is Timber Point, no.
It's about a mile from that intersection, Pete.
Yeah, maybe.
It's not that far.
Mile, point, mile, one mile.
I'm on the right hand side.
It's gotta be a mile and a half down.
Oh, one towards the dump, all right. Okay, way down, okay, I see.
It's way down.
Getting up towards something, something. Yeah.
Yeah, just down the hill from Jackson.
Yeah, and then take the right corner of the dump. Before you get to the dump. It's on the west road. On the west road, okay. Do you, do you go as far as that sentence places?
No.
Before? Oh, okay, I understand now, then it goes way down.
Yeah.
There's a couple, three roads that go in it. Yeah, I know where it is now. There's, there's one development that we looked at in there.
Right, there's the east-west road.
It's near where you'd live, George.
Yeah, yeah, no, it is, there, their road and their parking line abouts my parking.
Yeah, they went a mile in.
Yeah. Far as, yeah.
Can we move on to something else besides square footage?
Yeah.
Can we get into the height of the building? You know, within the seventy-five feet, I think it's what, twenty-five feet at the maximum of the height? It doesn't look like any of this could be any higher.
No, no, you are correct in that.
It looks like what, he's gonna be adding on, maybe fifteen feet.
You might have those numbers on your.
Yeah, I, I went back, we went from where, where they were talking about, the description here, one more page, Greg. And it shows, yeah.
It shows a wall height here than just the roof.
Oh, that's the addition here, so that's the existing building here.
Cause the ordinance piece says, um, within seventy-five feet shall I exceed twenty feet.
For the twenty feet?
For the height of the existing structure.
Okay, whichever, whichever. Which is ever greater. Yeah, because they're showing nine foot six and a half inch to there, so, did the Pete give it a three, four feet?
So it wouldn't exceed twenty.
And this is the other, the other addition here, and it's no higher, so. Okay. Good question, good point. Moving along, um, other questions? Is adding any bedrooms or do you look at it?
There are currently three bedrooms.
They're not adding any yet.
They are not adding any.
This, this is they're adding on to the living room.
Correct.
And they're adding on to corridor entry to one of the rooms.
Not that it matters, but this is a double lot.
It is, two adjacent, correct. I believe it's lot three, lot four.
Yeah.
The big thing really is just to make the kitchen more functional, they have a tiny, little tiny kitchen now, they go like that. And to make the living room just a little bigger, and the kitchen, they wanna rework the kitchen, which means they have to.
About twelve by seven.
Yeah. The kitchen's almost.
Excuse me?
That is tiny.
Very much so right now.
And three by, three by sixes is an island. You don't have to worry too much when you're booking.
As long as you've got the triangle, you're good.
That's all they got, it's just one here, a walkway, it's an island.
Do you have to just that square?
And here.
What's, what's the slope like from the front of the, um, building, the existing building down to the lake? What's the topography like?
Uh.
Steve.
It's pretty flat.
Yeah, it's like, just a little bit of a slope, but it's rocky and.
All rocky, it's all rocks, it's quite bold, it's a little bit, you know, you know.
Certainly not a mow, a mowable area by any means.
Right.
Down around the front side or the waterfront side, yeah.
It's rocks and trees, it's very heavily wooded.
Very natural state.
Grown up, and that's, I don't even think from the lake, probably in the summertime, it's, you don't.
What's going under roof from foundation? Excuse me? What's going under roof from foundation?
I believe post is what's on there now.
Yeah, that's what's on the existing.
Right, yeah.
No trees to be cut?
I believe there may be one.
One, one tree.
I believe there may be one.
Near the seventy-five foot, it might be out of the seventy-five foot mark, I'm sure it's.
If you could go to the sign that could show it, possibly. Now, I'm certain there didn't show it in the plan, but that tree, I believe, is somewhere right in here.
So for you guys, it's backed by the other addition, or off to the door east.
And a tree, Brad, is that a pond?
Just to get access in there.
Is that a pond? Is it not?
Pond or hamon.
So this, around this area, the trees are sparingly located on the.
There's a, there's a lot.
Yeah, it's very dense, the property's very dense with trees.
This is all, these wood lines, that, those are, that's very dense, when they show that wood line, that's dense woods. Not just a tree here and there, that's like undergrowth, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I was raising the point that if there were just a few trees on the lot and you had to cut a tree.
No.
And then some five feet, you might have to, I have to another one.
It would be difficult for somebody to walk through there, to be honest with you.
It's a range of rocks down to the lake.
Yeah, it's somewhere in this vicinity.
So, so I'm trying to envision what that might be like there, but if, after this deck, after this is, if this is all approved and this deck stays here for personal, we're inside and we're looking out in this forested area off to the northwest, that would be difficult to see very far into the ground, is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah.
Same thing off to the southwest. There's not a huge open view of the lake, the pond, the lake actually. Is the applicant proposing to alter any of this, or just construction?
No.
Not at all.
Not at all.
I think he likes it. They have, right now, there's a trail that, right, well, right here. This is, this was already, you know, this is where they do all their, they get out here, and there's huge boulders around.
Excuse me?
Right out here, huge boulders.
Yeah, we do, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, um, but that's where they go, you couldn't, you couldn't even add to the lake from, from that area. And they just.
Deer probably pass through here, huh? Yeah, right, right here. Way around the area.
I don't even, I was down in there in November, just because that's when we were looking at this job. I was thinking about the deer walking through there, some of those spots, I mean, I mean, they can go anywhere, but holy smoke, I mean, this rock's as big as this room, you know, as live here, but, and I built the home in, in Rome, but it's crazy. I mean, it's, it's some spots down there, especially down at the end of that road. I mean, the further you get in there, you get closer to the pond, it's like, holy smoke, it's just rock out there.
Yeah, when I first driven there, I was quite amazed.
Beautiful down through there though, isn't it?
It is, it's.
It really is.
Okay, so we talked about a lot of things tonight for the applicants, or representatives for the applicants. What other questions do we have at this time?
Um, the only, I have no other new questions, did we get the, that signed?
We did not, I'd like to make sure that, that this, which is an appendix to the application, gets initialed and signed, or signed and.
Absolutely.
And that we just wrote appendix A, just because it's a subject of impact.
Sure.
It'll be part of the application. So if you do that, please.
Yeah.
And perhaps if there is an individual private campsite on the lot two, she may cross that out and initial that too on the application.
Oh, yeah, but the point, oh, thanks, I think you better write the net zero as well. Okay.
Peter, I dated that as well, is that okay?
Yes, thanks.
Shouldn't that be twelve, twelve, shouldn't that be twelve oh eight? Yes.
Long gone. I think Jill should probably modify the story of the thing and make sure the applications.
Because they, they both are now twelve, twelve oh eight, or should be.
Good, good point. And sort of be clear on that initial, um, uh, application that we have with the appendix that shows there's a net gain of zero. That they should both, on the initial application, that under floor area, they should both be twelve oh eight.
You follow that? So we need you to amend the application initially.
Correct.
So that it shows on here that it's twelve oh eight and consequently no increase.
Okay, and I do, do I wanna do it on this one here?
Yes, please.
Initial D, thank you.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's a zero.
Shouldn't it be fourteen hundred and something, with fourteen hundred and something? Because you're including the decks, right, she included the foreground.
She gave us an appendix that shows what's being removed in square footage.
Yeah.
What's being added in square footage, where that's giving zero.
Right.
So therefore, there's no change, or that should stay at twelve oh eight. Not increase to fourteen forty-two.
I think it's right.
Okay.
Or are you saying it's fourteen forty-two to begin with?
I'm fine with that.
The bottom line is.
The wind, I think, wind is crazy out there.
Pardon me?
He thought it was thunder, I think it's wind out there blowing, I had to hold on to the door when it came, and it was gonna blow off.
The roof won't come off the building yet, I mean, the building's. We paid for it.
Yeah, good, this is a nice building. Thank you. So we have an application that I think that has been changed after our conversation so that it would meet our concerns. So, number one, it meets the intended, um, uh, outcome. And that it matches what is on the other side, that's, that's a good thing. We talked about probably a condition, and we talked about that a little bit, being the large control phosphorus runoff.
Correct, and I did note that, actually.
I think we need two conditions, one would be, um, in accordance with D E P best management practices for stormwater. The second is that you provide the letter of authorization from the landowner.
Yes, yes. Okay, so those are brilliant, those are conditions.
Okay, certain.
Oh, I can't.
Are, are there any other items that we need to discuss with the representatives for the applicant, so that they are aware of what we're asking?
Did you put a number down, contract just number?
Yes.
Yes.
It was Mr. McGee, right?
Seth McGee.
Seth McGee, yes.
Zero zero three one.
Okay, so is the board okay with what we have for an application package in our conversation? Okay, I'm sensing a motion.
I'm feeling it too.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the application as amended, uh, with two conditions, the first being that, uh, stormwater. So I'll make a motion that we approve the application as amended, uh, with two conditions, the first being that, uh, stormwater be handled consistently with DEP's best management practices. By the way, you're gonna, when you get the permit, you're gonna get, uh, a handout about that.
Okay.
Um, and the second would be that, um, a letter of authorization from the landowner be provided, um, to the code enforcement officer.
Definitely.
I second that.
Any more discussion? Any more questions?
I do not, Brad?
All those in favor?
Great, thank you.
It would be appropriate, and with those two conditions, and we're looking forward to hearing from you or from Mr. Craig about, about those. And, um, so, yeah, that as well.
And also, just out of curiosity, how long is the permit valid?
One year, well, the substantial start, you need to, this substantial start is thirty percent of the project, thirty percent of value of the project.
Okay.
So you get thirty percent done, you have, the permit doesn't expire, otherwise it's one year.
Okay, wonderful.
And I assume you'll get a copy of that permit in the mail, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And do you have a copy of our shoreline zone ordinance?
I do not.
You don't have to, but just in case you ever.
I believe Matt, uh, Mr. Craig does.
Okay.
Is that something I could get online, get offline?
Yes, yes.
No, that'd be great.
Website, which is, I knew we'd be able to, I would often take a look at it and find the ordinance, and that's what we look, that's what we go by.
Okay, wonderful, that's always handy.
I asked, I didn't ask explicitly, but I think Nick is gonna go get the conditions sheet, the thing that is.
Oh, oh, oh.
Which is why he. And our application, uh, things, so based on what we have for information, it should be mailed to Nick and to Craig.
Is Florida, was it Florida or Georgia, more than you call, no, that was Florida.
Okay, thanks everybody. Thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate it, we appreciate it.
Yep, thanks.
Careful travels.
Yep.
You in Portland?
No, just took us down. Goodnight, guy.
Can I?
Thank you, have a good night.
You can come up here, not in church. I said you can come up front, you're not in church.
So the actual business was to go over the, right, right?
Yeah, I don't think it should take long.
Yeah.
So, um, Peter, what we had before, uh, is the draft that I came up with, um, and then Peter reviewed it and made some additional edits to it, which are good. Pretty self-explanatory.
Does everybody have a copy of the draft letter? So the purpose of this is to, to try and solicit some legal help, legal counsel, right? So it's kind of a little wrong approach in that one, making sure that the town is always involved, or the town manager is always involved in the protection request. So they're gonna be asking for legal counsel, and so that's what it is.
And Peter, you may have noticed that I did CC Carrie on what I sent you and Nick, and, uh, and she responded, so she obviously looked at it. Um, I don't know what you found out, Nick, from.
Uh, she was gonna say, she said, still get a send.
Yeah, so just so she knows about it, that, that was the impression I got from her response, that she just wants to be kept in the loop.
Yep.
So, and, and the same probably with the response, wants to be kept on.
So with that in mind, if we have, come up with something that we can set, we agree upon, that you send off, then we can give this thing out.
One thing I'll note, I've just been talking to my wife, is, um, getting a response by April first may be a little ambitious, because they're losing one of their attorneys to, um, attorney leave within a week. And this is town meeting season, so that gets priority, as far as they're concerned. Yeah, I would say, I would, yeah, right, just be aware of the realities of it.
Yeah, but the only thing that that affects is how to add authority to do, to create another sign ordinance outside of the development plan, right?
I'm sorry, I think we're following.
The modifications to the sign ordinance is, the question is, is how to get the authority if it's not already in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
And so, it's gonna take time anyways, so.
It, it might require redrafting the comprehensive plan.
Right. So we might have to do two things.
It really has to do with whether you've got different standards in the same district.
Right. And, and, um.
So, have, have these two gentlemen seen the draft?
I assume they got it when they got the packet.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions, like I said, it, it doesn't really affect anything, it's just a procedural thing. If there's no authority now, how do you get authority, that's all.
Well, and if we can get the question answered upfront, then, you know, we can move right along.
Right, I just wanted to know, I wanted to make sure that they've seen both.
Yeah, well, it's more timing than it is anything else, and it's not gonna, the ordinance hasn't got, roll out any sooner than they're gonna get an opinion.
Yep.
But good point.
So has everybody?
I didn't have any problems with it myself.
I thought we got to the point with it, which is pretty, so thank you very much, George, for crafting this up.
Yep. I mean, have forced, it was kind of good, because it forced me to think about this more critically, and I realized, particularly Gary Mahler, and to a lesser extent, what these two gentlemen have said in the past. It made me realize, a lot of people are rather looking at this section of Route twenty-seven as the comprehensive plan envisioned, that are looking at it as solely a business district. And that's not how it's defined in the comprehensive plan, it's a mixed-use district of residential and, and commercial, not, it's not general development, it was specifically not put into general development. So if that's the desire, then the plan needs to be changed, but.
Do you need, do you need a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to know if everybody's happy to read it, are we okay with, with it? I would entertain a motion if someone is willing to make one.
I'd like a motion that the board, uh, accept the draft, uh, letter. That is, has been submitted by, uh, George. And be forwarded on to MMA.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? I think I'll be looking forward to getting some, some response from MMA.
So, Nick, I included their email address on the top there for you. And, uh, and I think it'd be appropriate for us to CC the town manager and, and the first selectman. I don't know that Michael knows about this yet, but Carrie already does, obviously.
Yeah.
And also, could you, could, when you put, when you copy and paste this into the email, it might be a good idea to double check that the links work.
Right over here. And a quick question, what do you think's familiar again? Is it, uh? So for sending it to the. So when you draft this, when you, when you get ready to send out, it's coming from. Oh, it's Carrie, but I mean, we should want to. Yeah, I guess, I can't speak for Carrie, I would say you send from him. Okay. She can tell you what, what's best, uh, that would be my advice, especially with, this is good. Thanks, thanks Seth. Um, thanks Seth, who is, uh, on the agenda, says needed zoning shoreline changes.
Oh, can I, uh, I think we didn't, I may be wrong, I don't know if you got my memo back of you and George, I sent one, but whether.
Yeah, no, I, I.
I don't think we had shoreline zoning on the agenda, other than, I can update you on, what we decided to do for shoreline zoning was to get copies of the guidelines and the statute. And I think.
Yeah.
Pete was gonna, Smithfield.
This is, this is Smithfield. I can tell you that, on that matter, um. I stopped at DEP yesterday to pick up copies of the guidelines. Colin Clark was not there, and there were virtually, there's nothing new on the shelves since I left six or seven years ago. The person on the call tried to find copies, and there weren't any, I got a call from Mike Morse today, because I called him down in Portland office, and, uh, they don't, the DEP is, I find it very hard to believe. But they do not have copies available, uh, to the public anymore. You've got to go online and copy off online both the statute and the guidelines. I can understand maybe why towns get upset, because I, I just find it incredible that they basically, and maybe I'm just getting old too, uh, online.
I understand the statute, I don't understand the guidelines not being available as a handout, but.
Guidelines printed haven't been amended since two thousand.
You said Colin Powell and.
Colin Clark.
He's no longer there?
No, he wasn't in the office for a while yesterday. But Mike Morse is the Portland office person, and he indicated, what he did say was, the DEP does not plan on setting any deadline for updating ordinances. He doesn't see that in the future, uh, I mean, nothing's coming down the line right away, but towns are supposed to be amending their ordinance, but, uh.
But they're not gonna enforce it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds, sounds consistent.
Consistent with the last commissioner's decision.
Yeah, nothing's changed since. So anyway, I don't have copies of the guidelines for you.
Okay.
I think if we're gonna work on it at the next meeting or a meeting down the road, somehow we're gonna, everybody's either gonna have to go online and get a copy, which.
Or maybe what we could do is, uh, find it, send a link to Nick, and Nick could put it in the packet, would that work?
Yeah. Thank you. So thank you very much for, for that effort, going to the office and calling the individuals to do that work, thank you very much.
Rich, did you want to do that, or do you want me to do it, or?
Do what?
Send Nick a link to the guidelines?
I wouldn't even know how to send a link.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll send a link to, to you, Nick.
That's why I retired, I'm old and I'm old fashioned. I'm old fashioned, I haven't gotten into the technology, Peter knows that, when I worked there, I had to keep running, so.
So thank you very much for that, all that legwork, thank you, appreciate that. Pete, uh, you took the effort, actually, to contact Smithfield, and this is what the essence of this.
Right, I talked with, uh, Andrew Marble, who's the code enforcement officer in Smithfield, as well as, uh, Rome. And I talked to him a couple of days earlier, I guess it was, on the phone, and he sent back an email to me, and it basically was, it says, thanks for chatting and all that. And, uh, he attached, uh, uh, there, uh, Smithfield's, uh, shoreline zoning ordinance, and, uh, I gave it to Nick at the beginning of this, uh, meeting. And Nick has that on file here, so he can send it out to all of us, so we'll have something to look at, our copy. And also, uh, Andrew was more than, he's very gracious in offering to come over and chat with us, and, uh, give us, you know, his thoughts, and, and how they went about it, and some of the pitfalls that they had to go through, this and that. So, you know, we could, uh, maybe consider having him as a guest, as they say, and we can have a nice discussion.
Yeah, I, I would be open to it, yeah, I don't know how the other board members feel, but that was very generous of, of him to make that offer to come over and, and talk. I guess for me, if, if he could point out one thing that we can avoid, some pitfall, that we can benefit from, that would be really helpful, even if it's one, um, as no thing. I don't know, have, have you had board members feel?
Yeah, I mean, in, particularly in terms of process, I suppose, the, I mean, obviously, their comprehensive plan is different than our comprehensive plan, so some of the changes that we may be looking at will differ in that, to that extent.
Right.
Um, but, um. You know, I, for example, I don't know how many kettle hole ponds they have in Smithfield, for example, but, um, which is one of the issues the comprehensive plan identifies.
Yeah, I'm thinking about any process stuff, as opposed to specificity, you know, that Belgium was interested in. So.
Might be good to first look at their ordinance and see, I don't know.
Yeah, that maybe, I think probably we should, you know, as far as maybe not scheduling for the first kind of meeting, but let us get into it a little bit.
Yeah, so benefit from, ask more intelligent questions.
Sure.
He may have some, and I know probably Peter's, uh, I think part of your significant issue with shoreline zoning is the non-conformance issue and the alternative expansion and stuff. You know, that was, that was amended even since I've left, and I don't have a bunch of experience on.
And one of the things that he talked about on the phone, and, uh, and Smithfield ordinance, they have both, they incorporated, they blended the two together, thirty percent expansion, and what we have, okay? And they went with that, and, and you can do an alternative, no, he said, you can really recommend in retrospect, that you just go one way to the other. By adding the thirty percent in there, makes the whole process, the permitting process, a lot more complicated for the planning department, as well as the citizens too, and a few other things, you know? So he was, he kind of leaned towards the, uh, just going with what we have, you know, the one method of, uh, no, no thirty percent expansion.
Right.
You know, and take that out of it.
Pete, did, did you get the sense from talking to him that he has actively assisted their planning board with the rewrite of their ordinance?
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
Because traditionally, that's not the role our code enforcement officer takes.
And then they had their administrative assistant, they're, you can ask me a question about. And then they had their administrative assistant, their, um, you can ask me a question about it. I know when I first talked to them back when they put it through a year and a half ago, two years ago, they leaned heavily on their administrative assistant, they only have one person like a receptionist type person. Their, their town office is a little bit smaller than ours, and she did a lot of the editing and word processing and all that. I'd be curious to see if we can get a hold of, if it's, you know, if we can get a hold of their, uh, um, document, and, and so we could edit it, you know, and the possibilities and model, you know what I mean? You know, that would save a lot of time if we decide to do something like that, if we can get a hold of that.
First step would be to look at it.
I know, yeah, one, one thing that we're different, uh, in terms of, we've got some districts that, like the resource protection district, we've got a slope district, and we've got, uh, you know, probably something different, more, more detailed than perhaps Smithfield, uh, ordinance center. And as I said in the past, our non-conformance section, um, has stuff that I think we want to amend, even if they're running the DEP, new amendments on their part. I just think it's confusing in places and, uh, actually counters different paragraphs, contradicts the other paragraph, and we need to, we need to fix that.
Great, so my sense is that, um, taking a look at what Smithfield provided would be a good start. At some later point, we could invite Mr. Marble to come down and chat with us after we've gotten into it a little bit and have, uh, a little bit more of a handle on what we want to do, and then we go from there. Does that sound acceptable?
So this will be on the agenda for next meeting?
Uh, next meeting. So end of March or middle of March?
Right.
Sure. Thank you, that's what we, we talked about before.
Right, yeah.
Do we have any, do we have any applications coming?
It'd be nice if Gary was here.
Yeah.
Nick, you don't know where we're standing without the.
I think it might be one. It's supposed to be two for the, and then we'll kind of everything that, something like that.
Well, that would be workable.
Yeah. That's right now.
Excellent.
Not that it makes any difference, but I want to do the next meeting, so. If I need to give anything, I'll be up before then.
Great, all right, we all set then? We're moving on to the next item. Gentlemen, we're review. So discuss formatting and assigned ordinance. So in your package, you probably saw this document. Sir. So this provided framework that would be, is that help?
Yeah, um, I got it soon enough, but I figured I wouldn't do it in the middle of this conversation. George?
Yeah, no, that makes sense, that makes sense. Where you see, you know, standard legal language, I mean, that can be just easily copied and pasted out of the commercial development review ordinance, for example.
Okay.
Yeah, the procedure here, whether it's a commercial development review ordinance or the shoreline zoning ordinance, it pretty much follows this procedure pretty closely. You say you novel the commercial develop.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just took this from the commercial development review ordinance just because it was the most recent we worked on, and, and it's the organization that, uh, it's how, how Chris Huck at KB Cog reorganized it for us.
So. This is pretty much.
So George, you drew the outline?
Yeah, I, I had an exchange with Peter, and he, he thought it'd be helpful if, if, rather than everybody coming in with a different outline, if we just had one for discussion and, and.
Okay.
And, and so that, uh, Mr. Osard and Denny could look at it in advance as well.
Okay.
The only one thing I would add to this, and it goes at the very end where, you know, there needs to have an article with regard to the various standards for the different land use districts. The one thing I don't recall, uh, your first draft, Mr. Osard addressing it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, and I don't know how to do it, but, uh, exactly, but, um, you know, you had rural land use districts, growth land use districts, but then there's the Route twenty-seven overlay district.
Right.
And maybe you had that in there, but, you know, that needs to be covered as well. I failed to add that to this outline.
Well, that was, uh, one of the reasons to further subdivide the, the districts.
Right.
Because the village districts, primary, well, the village districts and the development districts is where Route twenty-seven has any length, and when you go to North Belgrade, you don't have that Route twenty-seven overlay. So it has its own, uh, standard, performance standards.
I see what you're saying.
So, you know, it's really addressed by the performance standards.
Well, and then, so it'll be incumbent on us, Peter, to, when we're, we're viewing those standards, to recognize that Mr. Osard's incorporated the Route twenty-seven overlay district because it, it has, it has its unique write-up of, you know, and recommendations versus, you know, that literally overlays the other districts.
Yeah, and then sometimes they're a little confusing because the, uh, the village, Belgrade Lakes Village, for instance, is on Route twenty-seven, and yet it should be as stringent an ordinance there as possible, unlike out here, uh, on twenty-seven, uh, in this section of twenty-seven south of one thirty-five, even though it's a village district, it's on Route twenty-seven, they're two inherently different things. So that's why I split it up, I figured it was the easiest thing to make smaller pieces and deal with those things, because village district, Route twenty-seven, is one section of the same village district where the depot is, and they're, even though they're the same district, rather than separate them by identifying them, identifying Route twenty-seven overlay, I just made a separate signage district.
Yeah, no, I, I also find it confusing, and the background behind that is it, it was something that the businesses in, in town, particularly the tourism-based businesses desperately wanted. They were, um, uh, um, the, the model was Carabassett Valley, where they, you know, Carabassett Valley views the approach from King Field as part of their brand, their business brand, and that's, that's the approach the businesses here in town wanted to take with Route twenty-seven. They view Route twenty-seven as the corridor into Belgrade Lakes, and, and so it's important to keep it attractive, uh, from their business perspective.
Can, can we just, uh, kind of walk through these things? I mean, it's fairly obvious what it says. Table of contents will only happen after the rest of it is filled in, so you know where the cages are.
Right, right.
Uh, Article one on the general provisions, it'll say, uh, title will be the signage ordinance, and then you've got a reference to authority granted by the state statute. Effective date will happen at some future time. Uh, section four, relationship with other ordinances, that's part of the decision that will come back from MMA, right, as far as the relationship of the.
Uh, uh, no, actually, actually, uh, this is something slightly different. This is, uh, legal language that goes into all ordinances, basically, that, um, says something to the effect that if, if this conflicts with another ordinance, the more stringent of the two applies, um, and, and that, I would just, uh, that's a basic legal prin- principle, and, and.
You don't really even need to.
Yeah.
They don't even need it.
That, that's it, you can find that anywhere, and you don't have to write that, you draft it, it's.
Yeah.
Just take it right over here.
Yeah, no, just copy and paste it in, uh, along with those other things, they're all similar in that regard. It's just, it's boilerplate is what it is.
So, so for example, if you went to the, um, the current, um, commercial development review ordinance, proposal vision document?
Yeah.
Page one, Article one, section four, that paragraph is what George is talking about. Does that, does that help?
All right, so that, that entire document is formatted, so. And so where does legal, legalese, you can copy and paste that.
Yeah. Just so that it's there.
Okay. Amendments, availability, so forth. All right, so then we get down to Article two, purpose, uh, that's basically where I started.
Right.
Purpose. And, uh, I can actually reiterate some of the language from the development ordinance.
One thing that I, just that, we're talking about language in terms of purpose and stuff, my feeling is, and I can't speak to the board, but, um, the, uh, the idea, I remember, I specifically remember a section or a paragraph says, uh, we're hopeful or something that people will use.
Good judgment.
Or whatever, and it's like, you know, it's, it, I guess I would read that kind of, uh.
It's the third paragraph, the fourth paragraph, it's how hopeful this should go.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, that's not really ordinance language, it's, uh.
Well, purpose. What's a goal, funding, maybe a goal, but you don't necessarily.
Right.
Well, essentially, purpose is unenforceable, even the way that it's written in the thing, I mean, it is a goal. The issue that I had in making this statement was trying to address some of the fine points in dealing with design issues, lighting, some of the things that are not specifically covered in the ordinance as a performance standard, but to address them in enough of a sense that when an applicant puts together his design, uh, he will understand that there is a design intent requested, but it's not being enforced, there's no design review board. You know, other towns have design review boards. If you go to Bar Harbor and you make a submission, uh, it goes to the design review board. Then you have to jump through some stupid hoops over there. But, you know, that's the way that they want to control design, um, in addition to, uh, lighting standards. That board has basically some of the authorities that a planning board or a zoning board would have to limit some of the things and request changes, uh, in the design. So they're very, very concerned about, um, branding the town of Bar Harbor. It's not quite like that in Booth Bay, uh, you don't have a design review board, but they do make a similar statement, uh, you know, again, you know, it's a recreation area, they're looking for tourists, and they want to create a theme of some sort. So I think without the board enforcement of a design review board, you gotta make a statement someplace of what the, uh, goal is, even though it's unenforceable. You know, it's just kind of plant the idea in people's minds. You could use it as a note, something light as a note. But I don't think any, any place where you find purpose, nobody's reading that, um, a- as a rule, you know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a statement. This is how we're thinking.
And again, it says right, uh, yeah, note, as a note.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, uh, purpose, and the next thing is applicability, um. Now, as far as, uh, how the town wants to deal with, uh, review and permitting, if it's an application that is in conjunction with what you're reviewing, uh, then obviously the planning board has the review process involved with the over, overall submission of the permit application. It doesn't need to, in other towns, they set it aside, even though it's a line item on what you have to submit, uh, because the review is held to a different standard because there are so many performance standards in a sign ordinance that the planning board doesn't deal with it. It, the sign ordinance, because it's a standalone document, the code enforcement officer makes sure that it meets the standards, and that way, all signs, uh, sign permits go to the, um, code enforcement officer, you don't have to look at it, you can if you want to. If an applicant wants you to look at it, uh, or if you have some concerns, usually, like I said, the, a lot of planning boards, even though there are signs involved, let's say you're gonna have a supermarket or drugstore, and they're gonna put a sign out there, you might want to comment at that time by saying, is there any way that you can embellish that structure to, you know, make it more rural or this or that? That would be a great time for you to make that comment. Uh, as far as performance standards, basically, you're looking at square footage and those other things. That's what the code enforcement does, he doesn't deal with some of the, you know, more ethereal things. But if you have an existing business and they want to change a sign, um, you can decide whether you want to start having comment on, on all signs, might make you a little bit busier.
With similar in our commercial development review ordinance, we gave authority to the code officer for some of the smaller review projects as possible, signing, it's that certain types of signs could be a code officer permanent, not a planning board.
Well, yeah.
And they'll, they'll just deal with standards.
We could go either direction, um, um, you know, in, in the role of the planning board, just as a straw man, I, I had thrown out the idea of that if it's a project that's coming to the planning board anyway, whether it be for, because it's in short, because of shoreline zoning or because of commercial review ordinance, that we would review the entire project, including the signage, and everything else would go to the code enforcement officer. I thought that was sort of the business friendly, you know, application friend, applicant friendly way to do it. Uh, that way, somebody doesn't have to go to two different entities in the town government to get permits for the same, um, project.
Usually bigger projects, they go to another town, they go to the planning board automatically, and the sign item, let's say it's item number twenty-seven on the list that you're gonna review, what happens is, is the question is asked, the, are the signs being proposed in conformance with the performance standards of the town? Yes, okay, great, deal with the code offs. Now, unless you have, since there is no design review, this is probably the place to have comment on appearance, maybe you can have that type of input. Maybe you can make a statement by saying, gee, don't you think a sign should connect architecturally with the building, the building's very nice, you get this, you get that, could you add some of those details?
Right.
But, you know, that's basically what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, reviewing the context of the overall project.
George?
So you can say, be a, be a dual review, redo process, first by the code enforcement officer, and then.
Square footage.
No, second review by another entity being the planning board.
Yeah, and if it's an existing business and they're just gonna put up a sign, you don't necessarily want to see that. And, uh, I don't know whether you want to give the code enforcement the authority to ask him to tweak some designs, or maybe kick it back over to you if, if there's a problem.
I think a second review, I guess would make, give us some, um, authority over what's going on.
No, I, I think that's a, I think Gary needs to be part of that discussion.
Well, let's look at a couple of things, right, right nearby here, you've got, uh, kind of gas station with gas station signs, very contemporary design, this and that. Is that the presentation you want to make in the town, whereas across the street where the town office used to be, you had wood structure, this and that, you could have added a lighted sign, wouldn't made any difference, but, you know, you, it, it gave a certain presentation that was more rural, despite the fact that, you know, if you have a business, you might say, well, I want a lighted sign, I'm allowed to have one, this and that, or I'm allowed an electronic sign. So you've got the two contrasting presentations, even though the content of the material and the square footage can be a code enforcement issue, the, the look of it might be what you comment on. The latest sign that, uh, Hammond Lumber put up, uh, that replaced the old sign, basically they did it on the same structure, um, but they added wood detailing to that sign, um, you know, there's.
Stone.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they, they kind of dressed it up a little bit, despite the fact that it's a very industrial looking site, uh, it, it wasn't as stark as it was before. So they had some concern about making the appearance, um. So they had some concern about making the appearance, um, a little more appropriate, uh, I mean, as much as you can have for fifty-five mile an hour speed limit, uh, as compared to, you know, uh, I don't know, the Gagny replaced their thing, you know, it's just basically, it's a rectangle. So if you have the ability to comment on it, uh, between those two, Hammond, you know, did what you would like him to do, uh, and, and I think it pays off for them, and, and, you know, it's a very subtle thing when you look at it. Uh, added a few dollars, but not that much. The next thing that you, you know, other than enforcement, this and that, uh, but within that, in the, uh, applicability, signs are not requiring review, you can make a list of all that, uh, or permit, and then, um, one question that I have is the issue of grandfathered signs, signs that are nonconforming. Um, I didn't address it in the draft that I put together, figured that was something that needed to be talked about.
Okay, see, I thought you had language in there that was, people basically get to keep their existing signs until such time they replace them, basically.
Well, I did that because that's what your ordinance said, you know, that, you know, if you've got six hundred square feet of signs, you know, you get to keep it because you have it. Uh, uh, you know, the fact that I used to be in the sign business, let me see, I never liked to see this in there, but when the state of Maine passed the Maine billboard law, it established a precedent, actually nationwide, probably, they, they've used Maine's implementation. Uh, they allowed a five-year period of time to recapture the value of the sign. And so they figured that, uh, after a five-year period, you have recouped your investment in that sign, and at that point in time, that old sign that's no longer conforming can be brought into conformance. So if you've got a sign that's too big, or you have too many signs, uh, so you have five years to comply. At the end of five years, you, that sign has to be, become a conforming sign. So if you've got a three hundred square foot sign, and you're only allowing a hundred and fifty square feet, well, after five years, you change it to a hundred and fifty square feet.
I mean, the, the idea sounds like a good idea to me, but, uh, the, the thing I think about is it'd probably be an enforcement nightmare for the code officer, and I don't foresee the town...
Well, you have to have an inventory of those nonconforming signs, you know, you're gonna have a list, and you're gonna have a cutoff date, and, you know, you do it one time and...
Yeah, you gotta be committed to enforcing that, and I doubt Belgrade has the word.
So that's, that's something, you know, I, I, you know, I didn't know, you know, it needed to be talked about, I didn't want to, you know, put it in there.
I mean, it's a, you're, that approach is pretty common in state government, too, I mean, Maine D E P did the same thing with underground storage tanks, except it was ten years, recouped the, uh, investment, but, um, uh, that, you know, having an upgrade schedule basically is very common, um, but I, I agree with Rich, I don't think we'd fly in Belgrade.
Well, that, okay, so we've talked about...
The, the other way to do it is say you can, uh, maintain, repair, maintain, and whatever the sign, uh, and, and I don't know how that could be like fifty percent.
Well, maybe you can't upgrade or replace it, maybe you can't replace it.
Right, yeah, let, let it live its natural life, and then, then when they replace it or decide to upgrade it, then, then they have to comply with the new ordinance.
Well, right, but, you know, this is really a question, uh, the replacement or upgrade of existing signs, so the idea is that an existing sign, if it's an, if it's a nonconforming sign, it is grandfathered until such time when it is, uh, uh, but it may not be upgraded or replaced, at which time it must conform.
Gary, were you trying to say something, I think I may have cut you off.
No, 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 I was, how many, some of that language is already here, what you're addressing right now is associated with grandfathering, but you don't really want to grandfather, so you say, "I won't grandfather you until five years when we think," so it's not really grandfather language. And I was just committing to him that the replacement for upgraded existing signs is where you put language that'll address those issues. That, that's not necessarily grandfathering, but it's like you were saying, it would stay until...
Well, existing nonconforming signs must be, uh, at, at any time that they are to be, uh, upgraded or replaced, must conform with the existing new standard, something like that.
Fifty percent of its damage is destroyed by more than fifty percent.
There you go, that's another word, something like that.
So you can continue to fix it, but if you have a significant...
The wind blowing that destroys it, you've gotta be careful.
There's something of that nature.
You can't increase or replace.
Right, Rich's example is a good one, because that's the language we use in other ordinances.
Which one?
What Rich just said.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, there are sign...
Yeah, we can talk about that later.
I can get into what is, you know...
What is fifty percent?
Yeah, I, I've never liked that kind of approach myself. Works for a building, I'm not sure it works for a sign. D E P uses it for docs, too, fifty percent, remove, you know, you lose your grandfather.
So, uh, administration and enforcement, like we've talked about before, it's a kind of two-tiered type of thing, and I'll write something, and then we can refine it, what the code enforcement role is in most cases, what your role is in, certainly in applications that come before the board, that signs have to be included if they're gonna be proposed, and then you can tweak that. Uh, the idea of, uh... Okay, I think they have a page missing, I, there were three pages printed, and now I'm, I'm looking through it, I mean, I, they printed three pages, but I'm missing the Article Five. That goes from Article...
Maybe I forgot, maybe that's not your problem, maybe that's my problem, I, I forgot Article Five. That was a test.
Now, sign permits...
Probably is no one.
No, there is no article.
Okay, alright, so if we go to page three, basically, um, sign permits, uh, it's really a question for creating, uh, a formal application, everybody has to fill out, what it includes, drawing, site plan, and so forth, so you have to describe that. Um, and then, uh, current administration, uh, kind of reiterates what we talked about before, the administration and the enforcement.
Add the word "long" after "in a expiration."
How long does an applicant have, that's right, yeah, that came up tonight. Um, transferability, um, certainly that's one of the things, that, uh, you know, businesses are sold, and then they continue to exist, or sometimes a business, this is the other thing, too, sometimes a business is sold, and you see this in the village a lot, and the business itself changes, you know, the, the, the coffee shop becomes a gift shop. Well, the sign perhaps is grandfathered, and can you change the, uh, the graphics on the display? Well, if we say in the ordinance, "Yes, you can, as long as you don't remove anything." You know, in other words, this, this is what's grandfathered in this manner, in other words, typically when you look at a commercial sign, um, let's say it's carved wood, well, you're gonna have to take that off. At that point, that sign, if it's too big, has to be made small, but if it's a sign that has panels that slide in, you could slide in a new panel because the frame remains the same, or maybe you put an overlay. So maybe it's just a description of what happens, but it, it goes back to the earlier description of how to, you know, what is grandfathered, or what do you make change?
Well, I wouldn't at the time of, uh, the transfer of ownership of that particular facility that you have to upgrade all signs.
Could do that, too.
I mean, at that time, they should be...
Yeah, no, that's a good way to do it, I mean, that's the way a lot of towns deal with septic systems.
Right.
You upgrade the septic system at the time of the property.
So the cost, you know what the cost is, if there is a cost.
Yeah, right, because money's on the table, and it's a good time to do it.
Couple of, uh, businesses, I'm just gonna throw them out there, uh, if they change a name, um, Dave's Store and, uh, the Sunset Grill, there's two signs that might not fit in the aesthetic, uh, appeal, you know, Dave's is a lot more signs, I'm not concerned about the wall signs and all that stuff, but they do have a, is it a beer sign or something, a lighted sign outs- outside, I think it develops, I don't know if they light it, but it is built that way. And then, of course, uh, the Sunset Grill is neon, exposed neon, you know, which I think in my ordinance, I wrote, "No exposed luminance, too."
Right.
So, uh, uh, now that's also either as a sign, in which, I'll have to go back and look at it, but either as a sign or even as a decorative element, because sometimes you'll have somebody put a border, and usually we used to do this with, uh, motels, you know, we'd put a line on the front, just to...
I thought that went out with the sixties, but...
Well, there's still some around, you go...
You haven't done it yet.
I haven't been to New Jersey lately.
Well, Brunswick, you go to Brunswick on, uh, uh, south of the town there, whatever that street is up there, there's a lot of the old style motels.
Oh, yeah, right.
And they, the neon is a retro look, and that's okay, because it existed there, but I don't know, you want to expand on that, you don't, you don't want to keep it in this town.
Nuvo retro.
Yeah. Uh, so, alright, uh, and then permit review procedures, it's kind of reiterating a lot of things, rights not vested, standard language, permit fee schedule, that's, that's the other thing. Uh, usually there are two areas, I'm just gonna throw it out without having to get into it, but it's usually a flat fee which covers the processing, in other words, you're gonna pay your code officer a certain amount of money to go through this thing. And then, from a municipal standpoint, oftentimes there's a plus, so much per square foot.
Yeah.
And so it could be ten cents a square foot, twenty-five cents a square foot, whatever you think. If you put that in in the beginning, it gives you the ability to increase your fees over time, uh, without having to change the processing fee. So let's say you have a, um, fifty dollar processing fee for a sign permit, okay, one time, fifty dollars, uh, pays for the code officer's time, he's gonna have to review the thing, and then he's gonna have to go look at the finished product, and unlike today, you know, his cost is gonna go up, you know, so whether it's part-time or in the future full-time, you gotta cover that cost. Uh, if you have a lot of business going that way, and you want to make money on it, if it's a question of a revenue source, and you put that per square foot cost, that's an easy number to increase by fifty cents a square foot, you got a thirty-two square foot sign, it's sixteen dollars more. So, kind of, you, it's not complicated.
Should this, uh, section be written such that, and it, a lot of times, the, the select board sets the permit fees and stuff like that, so that this doesn't have to be amended, this is part of the ordinance, if you write it such that the select board sets the fee, what it don't want to, if you want to raise the fee, you don't want to have to write the town meeting to raise the fee.
Well, you could just say, "A, a, a permit processing fee will be charged in addition to a per square foot fee," uh, with the fees established by the select board, and just leave it at that.
Whatever it is, uh, we want it so that we don't have to go back to town meeting and...
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good suggestion, and that's certainly how the commercial development review ordinance is.
Now, appeals usually always go...
The only, the only downside with that is I can't remember when it came up, but it was right after I joined the board, and no, and nobody at the, in the town office could find the fee schedule.
No.
Select board didn't know what it was.
Well, they could be printed, if you're only gonna have a minimum number of sheets printed for a sign permit, so you can print it out on the top.
Right.
Uh, appeals, always, uh, owning board of appeals, you know, that's typical, however you refer to it, as a board is owning appeals, owning board of appeals, whatever it is. Yeah. Um, now, one of the things in as far as appeals go, you might want to limit what can be appealed. So, um, and so, numbers of signs, in other words, if you've limited, you know, one per street, and so on and so forth.
I noticed some towns had, uh, that limited, you could only appeal the dimensional aspects of the sign.
Yeah, that would be something, um, you know...
There's two kinds of appeals, you, one, you surely have to appeal a decision, uh, from that, you know, and then there's the appeal, the, you know, typically dimension.
You appeal the decision that it was a faulty decision, or, but the standard is the state, the state has four questions that you have to meet.
That's for variance.
Well, that's true, that's true, so if you want to increase the square footage you're talking about, it's really a variance.
Right.
So, um...
Yeah, those are the, the two appeals, there's, there's the administrative appeal, and then it's the...
There's four standards to meet, yeah.
Yeah, and you have to, you have to meet all four.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, it's almost impossible.
And it is, it is, uh, now, depending on which town you're in and who does own the board of appeals, legally it's very difficult to get...
Well, I've had board of appeals in my...
Well, I, I never lost a, a, a variance application in thirty-five years, because mostly I would tell my customers, "You can't win this." I can't think of a way to present case where you can't win it, so don't do it.
Pretty hard to argue, the most, particularly the land question cannot be easily reasoned.
That's right, that's right.
Your sign is this size, you need three more inches, or whatever.
Anyway, the hardship, the hardship order.
The hardship in this case has to be addressed in the ordinance, and the only hardship that I can see is, well, and it was, it really relates to the size of the sign, is the size. You know, uh, if you're traveling fifty-five miles an hour, the sign has to be bigger because you have to be able to read it from a further distance, because in reality, you only have eight seconds in your brain to recognize what's going on. And, uh, so, how far away are you, at what speed? That's, that, if you can make a sign work at whatever that distance is, uh, you know, it's, uh, eight seconds at fifty-five miles an hour, you know, you're six hundred feet away. So, um, and then revisions to approve sign, uh, not exactly, I guess you, from a definition standpoint, you can talk about what types of changes can be made without the requirement of a new permit?
Right, yeah, that, that's all I was trying to hit at, was when does it need a new permit, when does it not?
And then penalties, I guess you'd have to go back maybe to the select board, you
Yeah, it's interesting, some towns, even in the commercial development review ordinances or site review ordinances, which is what, what most towns use for terminology, uh, some have a fee schedule built right, uh, uh, enforcement penalties scheduled built right into the ordinance, and some don't, we don't.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to envision in my mind, I put up a sign, and it doesn't quite conform to the standard. The enforcement I see is take it down, make it conform, and I'm trying to figure out, just, that doesn't have to be very extensive here.
No, it doesn't.
I mean, because it seems to me, if you're not performing, take it down.
Yeah, it might spell out a timeframe for compliance or something like that.
And there could be a penalty because you didn't conform.
Right.
Well, you didn't get a permit.
Well, right, that's, that's right, if, if a sign is found to be nonconforming, you have sixty days to cure the problem, or, uh, you know, a hundred dollar fine per day. I think that's the way the state...
How about go to jail for it?
Up two, up two for jail.
Up to a hundred dollars.
They never do.
Relegated to live in North Belgrade.
Right, you can't live here.
Have to have coffee with them.
And then the, the whole land use specific district and all of that. Alright, um, I guess I can reform out a base...
And this isn't all-inclusive, I, I didn't try to capture everything, because I, I was just trying to lay out the bigger pieces.
Well, I have the development review ordinance, so I'll grab what's in there and use that.
I would, I'm sorry, but I was just gonna say, my thinking is, where you can make it as simple as possible, make it as simple as, it's gonna fly a lot better, it's not complicated, it's compli- at least in numbers, it's complicated.
Really what people are gonna do, when you're looking at this ordinance, it doesn't matter if it's thirty pages or two pages, they're gonna say, "I'm here, how big a sign can I make?" And, and so, they might come and ask Gary, you know, come out on Thursday night, and say, and he'll say, "Oh, you're in this district, you can have a sign that's thirty-two square feet." and he'll say, oh, you're in this district, you can have a sign that's thirty-two square feet, and, uh, it has to be outside of the right of way, and it can only be externally lit from above.
At the same time, even if it, if it's thirty pages and the average guy in town has to fumble through it, and it's complicated, it's like, it's not gonna pass.
I understand what you're saying, but also at the same time, when you have to define these districts and everything. So you're gonna have to, there's gonna be complexity, not complexity, but volume, just as a result of the number of districts you have. You just point to, well, this is the district you're in. It's pretty, I mean, you can make it simple, even though it's volume.
Yeah, you can have various districts.
If you wanna go to Bar Harbor and, you know, set up a design review board, you know, I'll tell you, as a sign company, I, I used to hate to go, you know, despite the fact that I, well, here's the other thing too. More than half of the permits will be applied for by the sign company. Because exactly what you're talking about, the business owner doesn't know anything, they don't wanna know anything. Will you get the permit? Yeah, I'll charge you seventy-five dollars to get the permit? Okay, great, go ahead and do it.
So that's, but the point I think that Rich is making, uh, is that there's a lot of small, one-owner businesses.
Oh, true, yeah, yeah.
And they're not gonna wanna spend money for a sign person. They're gonna either be putting up the road, or buying something, in a trying to reduce costs.
Well, as long as they're aware that, you know, they can get a quick answer from the code officer. And, you know, if they don't have to go through the planning board to get a signed permit, you know, it's just the sign.
Yeah, right.
You know, and Gary, it won't take him long to figure this out.
As we develop it, Gary will be here, I assume you'll ask him to be here when we.
Well, normally he is, the ten-dollar meetings are on the works tonight.
But it's not gonna be as complicated if the ordinance he has to enforce in Augusta.
Okay, great. Um, I just wanted to make sure to add one thing, that, um, in light of what Danny you said earlier on by having the note.
Yeah, comment with note.
Yeah, comment with note, and I, I really like that idea. Uh, perhaps the same language could be used as part of a presentation before people vote on, you know, proposed ordinance. That's one thing. But then also in light, in light of what Rich was talking about, I, I would still advise, or recommend, that for the purpose of, of writing.
More simplicity.
Clarity, simplicity.
Yeah, that, that reminded me of a comment that I had had, some of your standards in, in there, uh, in the, the first draft kinda thing, it's like, it wasn't really clear that there was a requirement, it was just listed kinda thing, and just make sure the language of this, you know, sign, you know, very clear.
Well, you know, as a guy who has applied for thousands of sign permits, uh, if I look at this ordinance, or anybody that I know of in the sign business looked at this ordinance, they would say, okay, where are you? You go to the map, I'm in this district. You pull up, basically you got a short sheet that says wall signs, freestanding signs, lighted, non-lighted. Okay, I know everything I need to know, ten minutes.
But I guess the point that worries me, as I hear it now, tell me if I'm wrong, is that this has got a past town meeting.
Yeah.
Right, so the town, whoever, the common person who's reading this, has got a feeling it's not complex. I think that's the point that makes it.
That is exactly it.
It's not that someone that's going to be applying for the sign, who knows sign law and looks right, is gonna be bothered by it, it's just the visual impact of a large document, seemingly complicated.
Right.
You gotta make it sound the same.
Well, and, and we talked about this, uh, at the last meeting when you weren't here, Danny. To the extent that the applicants we get are under the comprehensive, um, uh, review ordinance, any indication, most applicants are incredibly unsophisticated. I mean, the only applicant since I've been on the board that we've had that had engineers or consultants, the town, Hammond Lumber.
Dollar General.
And Dollar General.
Also out at the pond, uh, the Stanley Voice Camp.
Oh, that was, that was Shirley and Sony.
No, the people of the entire grid.
Yeah, so, you know, but most are, they come in here and, you know, and we, well, you saw what we went through with an architect. We're helping them fill out the application just about.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think, uh, we get the point, I mean, I really do. This is a town with a lot of single-ord businesses, small, and so, a lot of them will be looking at it. So we gotta just make sure that they understand.
Yeah, and, and, and of course Gary does that all the time.
Yeah, they do have to get it through town meeting.
Right, first step, yeah, and it doesn't get through there, we don't have to worry about it.
Well, at that stage, if it is a town meeting as opposed to a vote the day before, you're not gonna rely on somebody reading the ordinance and interpreting it in their heads.
Well, I, I, I'm using town meeting in the most general event.
Which is part of, that's the town meeting, because the town meeting opens up right in.
I mean, barring some change in policy at the town office level, at the select board level, that's where all these things go.
Yeah, there hasn't been any ordinances adopted at the Saturday.
The Saturday.
It's always a referendum.
Yeah, a single item, a single section, I mean, this is only a single section.
Well, the way, the way things are going these days, they oughta start putting those things on Saturday town meetings, so that generates enough interest to get people to go. It's like, I looked at the town report the other day, and it's like, gee, there isn't anything on there that is of controversy that, uh, is worth going to.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a topic for a different type of meeting. But I, I, I agree with you, that a lot of towns seem to have gone to referendum voting, and it's making the town meeting less and less meaningful.
Right.
And more, and, and less and less people go to it because of that. Because they say, well, there's nothing really there. So you wonder all about the degraded numbers, or lower numbers of people going to town meetings. It's because you make it so they don't.
It's a self-fulfilling prophecy.
Right.
All the stuff that's already been discussion has already been voted on.
And in fact, the matter, town meetings are where all the discussions should take place. So I'm a big enthusiast for town meetings, but it's gotta be a substantial issue, so people can.
Right.
Was there a large turnout for the hearing to discuss the items on the ballot?
I wasn't there.
No?
No. There were probably twelve, fourteen people there, including, not counting the board members.
Not, not two or three or four hundred?
No, and that's generally the way it is. You know, we're gonna have candidates like next Wednesday, and you'll probably have twelve or fourteen people. I mean, I've been, well, sometimes you have twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah, it seems though they should have the town meeting first, and then have the referendum vote after.
That's, that's the, they're going to put things on secret ballot, but I agree with you. That's the way to do it, is put the town meeting portion first, and then have the, so people at least can ask questions about what's on here.
So they're more knowledgeable about it.
Exactly.
Right.
And that's the way I would go, if we're gonna continue this path.
Yeah.
If, if I had my vote, but I just want to vote.
And you have my vote.
Well, the last contentious piece was what, the last town office?
I don't wanna hear it. I think I remember that.
Well, gentlemen, does this help?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for your time, advert, putting forth this advert, really appreciate it, can we, really appreciate it.
I was telling him, what a thank you shout.
It is.
No, you don't, I mean, it's, you guys, I really appreciate it.
We have an opening.
There you go.
You always say that.
Thanks and have a great night. Thanks very, very much.
Good evening.
Are you open?
Yeah, we're gonna be wrapping up, I just wanna, if there's any other, if there's nothing else.
Good night.
The only thing I would, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're just gonna go, uh, without any updates that I have from Gary. Did you have anything from the town office that would be important?
Ask for you, ask for which, I guess your terms expire after the meeting.
Oh, okay, I'll go there for sure. Hey.
Be great, you wanna be a real member?
All right.
I got you. Yeah, I know Nick, yeah, okay, you got it. Uh, yeah, I, uh, like you weren't here the last meeting, I suggested it would be a bad idea to respond to Mr. Ed's letter to the county, uh, that was talking about the short-term things, and.
Oh, right.
I just drafted one that said, we don't have townwide zoning, we really don't have specific standards for that now, and thought the only thing we could really do is, uh, uh, look at some of the issues when we update the show on zoners, which most of these short-term levels would be, and then, without saying, we can address all those issues.
Certainly, that's being addressed now, there's been a lot of talk on the TV about the state losing a lot of rental taxes.
Oh, the B and B, or no?
Yeah, Airbnb, yeah, right.
There's a great pay, yeah.
The lodging tax.
Yeah, which is like ninety-five percent or something.
So, so that may have an impact on, on the rental.
But, but it sounds like for specific Belgrade, not taxing, but Belgrade, B and B type businesses, we might be able to address some of these concerns.
Stuff like parking and maybe septic or whatever, but it was not a lot, you know, we're not gonna be.
Yeah, no, it's the peripheral stuff, really.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, I thought it would be wise to at least let them know we has a letter.
So, uh, so two things, one, thank you very much for drafting this.
Well, I forgot about it till, I was supposed to give it to Nick after the last meeting. Yesterday, when I went to DUP, I said, oh yeah, I'm supposed to write a letter too, so I might give it.
This looks fine to me.
Thank you, yeah, I just read it as, I could pass it out right now. I don't have any concerns, um, about what you've written, so I'd be happy to pass this along if the board was in agreement that the text was sufficient.
I think so, I mean, it's nice courtesy.
So I would entertain a motion, then.
Make a motion to approve the letter as written.
So, any more discussion? All those in favor?
And since it's probably coming from you, or maybe we'll just get Nick to sign it, Nick, fool, four feet or whatever. That's, because it's not really in the form of, now, maybe.
It might be in a raise for you, then. I wouldn't count on it, though.
Or, I guess it is in the form that you could just sign and send it down. Do we typically put on town letterhead?
Yeah, I'll scan it.
Thanks, thanks very much, and then, also on this topic, you know, we just, you know, the breakfast type of issue that he brought up, I thought a lot, I don't have any solutions, about some of the problems he talks about, it really pointed towards enforcement, law enforcement, civil case type stuff, you know, I mean, the type of things that he was talking about really had nothing to do with, um, with the planning board to do. And, um, our town is not in a, we don't have a local authority, our closest local authority is kind of our sheriff's office.
And yet, and what are they gonna say, be quiet after?
Right, or then you go to state police or something else, but, but, um.
Well, and, 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 you know, the select board is apparently, is my understanding now, multiple occasions decided not to pursue a parking ordinance, or a street parking ordinance. So there's no jurisdiction there, even for Gary.
Right.
And the only thing I could think of was, and I think it would be unique to this, and we talked about it, the situation, at least the way it was described to us, where this may be like a, more like an event venue, than just renting it out for, you know, short-time residential kinda use. Uh, maybe if that was really the, you know, if that really turns out, turned out to be the case, I suppose maybe it could get covered by the, uh, commercial development review ordinance, because you're converting a residential structure to a commercial use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, um, but that, that, that would be about it.
Well, we do have the noise on ordinance in place.
No, we don't.
No, we didn't.
The mass gathering ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, the mass gathering, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, within that ordinance, as a, as a noise criteria.
It'd be pretty hard to enforce the people yelling and having.
Well, first off, you have to have enough people to trigger the.
Five hundred, is it five hundred?
It's a number that's pretty, pretty large as opposed to, like, two fifty.
Yeah, right. We wanted it at two fifty, and the select board wanted it at five hundred.
Yeah.
I mean, it reaches a point where people need to take care of their own shit, and, you know, call law enforcement when they're being bothered. And when you keep cramming ordinances down people's throats, they're gonna start rejecting them all.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and that can be a rather complex issue too, with this particular current owner, I believe. I'm not trying to single anybody out, but I think sometimes a confrontational, or maybe combative nature of the, what happens between the owners and the friends and the neighbors down there, make it, um, less palatable.
Yeah, and that, that, it sounds, I mean, I don't know all the history, but that, that, uh, that little pool's been poisoned for a while, would be, I guess, one way to put it, in terms of all the neighbors in that, that particular landowner over a variety of issues.
Correct.
So there's considerable history there, so, as there oftentimes is with these kinda situations. It's a little bit of a duel too, because, you know, when he called the county sheriff's department, they said they couldn't do anything, 'cause the town doesn't have an ordinance, and, you know, whoop, whoop, whoop. You know, there's no, no parking ordinance, there's no, uh, noise ordinance, et cetera. So, I, you know, um.
But people, they'll have to, they'll have to consider it, you know, is it worthwhile to call the sheriffs and come down and say, hey, please tell these guys to be quiet, you know, they're.
Because it is disturbing the peace, I mean, and, you know, there is stuff, when they're just saying stuff like that, they just don't wanna come down.
Yeah.
I mean, there is ways they can quiet people down.
Well, and I can't remember if you were at the meeting, or, were you at the meeting with this?
No.
Because I, it wasn't nearly as bad, but, uh, there was a situation diagonally across the street from me, and I, I, uh, got, had a party, got an outdoor pool, big outdoor speakers and all that, and, uh, but I, I know him, so I just went and talked to him, and he quieted right down. Neighbor on the other side has history with him, you know, he called the police, but the police, this sheriff's department did come and knock on his door, and, uh, uh, this was another occasion, uh, but, um, and, uh, they did respond to that, so I don't understand, you know, maybe it depends on who shows up or something.
Yeah.
Clyde, Clyde's into, Clyde is an interesting charac- interesting character.
Yes.
Yeah, you know who we're talking about.
Yes.
You ever meet his father? I know his father, and he's even more interesting, Clyde's son. All right, the apple doesn't fall too far away from the tree, to say.
His father live in town?
Thank God he doesn't.
He's up in Rome, right?
No, no, he's, he's actually down in Randolph, he's a good veteran.
Isn't that where Clyde is now, he's down in Gardner or something like that?
Gardner, yes.
Clyde's a good, good, good Marine, he's a good guy. Just to get, you have to know how to handle the guy, that's all.
Well, thank you very much for the updates there, um, this.
I was gonna be talking with Carrie today, she asked me if I had five or ten minutes of something that's gonna be coming up. For the past week, she's been attending meetings on this new pot regulation the state is setting up. And what she's come up with is, the state is intending on giving, uh, setting a standard of so many square feet to be grown. Thirty percent's gonna go to the small growers, in other words, medical marijuana licensed people, which we already have in town. The deal is, they're gonna come to us and get permission for a place, then apply to the state.
Who's they?
We only have one in town right now, that's licensed for marijuana.
So you're saying the applicants, right?
Yes.
So, does that answer your question?
In other words, be ready to have an application for something that the state doesn't even have a hand on yet. But what they wanna do is, in the case, let's say, like, you know who it is, just up the road from here, if they get a blessing, then when they do go to the state, they're already got one foot in the door with the town. And the town will hand it right over to them. Now, and she says the other seventy percent is gonna be buildings, three hundred, uh, three thousand square feet, thirty thousand square feet or bigger, to grow marijuana.
That's what they would need?
Yeah. And that's considered a big business. And that's considered a big business.
So if I wanted to have, have a business like that, I would be required, we think, to have a building no less than thirty thousand square feet?
For a big business, if you want, want the smaller one, you know.
You can have the smaller one, for a bigger one.
In other words, like what George, what Big P's been putting up with, not Belgrade, you know.
Does that be small?
Yeah, and what she was, they also, the state's talking about is, because of the underground, the price, it would keep the taxes real low on it, so that there's just no money to be made in the underground, everybody's gonna have to go legal.
I remember reading something in the paper that, that was one of the lessons Colorado learned, that they increased the taxes too high.
Anyway, what she said is, I'm just giving you a heads up, that don't be surprised, the next couple of months, we have somebody in front of us asking us, what's the process? How can I get a, what do you call it? You call it a pot store, you call it a smoke shop? Are you gonna be able to sell it right out of Christie's store, go in and fill your gas tank, get a twelve pack of pizza and a bag of pot?
I say, put a vending machine outside of Christie's.
Sure.
We, we don't have any regulations.
The only regulation we get is our commercial development review ordinance, right?
That's right, that's, that's what I told her, I said, none of that have to fall into that right now, as a business, and.
So is, is, do you know, is there, is there a discussion with the, uh, select board of the town adopting some kind of ordinance specific to that?
They're, they're, they're waiting to see what the state is doing, basically, they don't even wanna put a moratorium on it right now. Cause that's good for a hundred and eighty days, can be extended, a hundred and eighty days. But what do you do after that, if the state takes two years? Now? So, yeah, that kind of, take a, let's wait and see what happens with the state, so.
So Roger, what you're, what she talked to you about was just the growing facilities, not the retail or the lounges.
Growing to sell. In, in other words, adult use is the way the state is putting it.
Right, yeah, cause, cause the way the state's carved this up is, the use of marijuana, they're, they allowed that part of the law to be implemented, or to go into effect. That's already in effect today, or yesterday. Um, the, uh, it's the retail shops and the lounge, so-called lounges or whatever, the, you know, the marijuana bars, um, that has been put on hold until the state comes up with its standards and rules. And, um, so this would be the facilities that grow the marijuana for individuals to use, is what you're talking about. Yeah, we, the only thing we would have is the commercial, if it triggered the commercial development review ordinance, or if it was in the Shoreland Zone, and if it doesn't fall under one of those two, they can do whatever the hell they want.
Cause when she came in for a medical marijuana stuff, she's limited by the state already. So all she needs is an extension of her business to go to adult sales. Then she can grow her own up to so many square feet, and then run it up, sell it for adults. Because she's already licensed, she knows, she's already got one foot in the door.
Right.
And by coming to us first, that's gonna help the state, well, yeah, okay, the town already agreed to it, well, you're, you're first. You've already got your A and B together, you dotted your I's, you crossed your T's. Now, that's, that's the attitude the state's gonna take. And we basically have nothing in place to control it, where is it gonna be sold? Again, their schools, their churches, their daycares, it's just like an adult ordinance type deal, you know, where, where are you gonna be able to get these places?
Yeah, but they're, they're not gonna be, are they, can they grow? Can they sell, they can't retail though out of a growth facility, can they?
I didn't think so.
I did not think so either.
From what I understood, that you could not.
They just grow for their clients, which is fine.
Well, that, yeah, that is, yeah, that's, yeah, no, that's fine. I, I was thinking, you know, just for recreational use, not medical.
Adult use.
Are you talking the retail side, recreational use?
But the recreational.
Which is the retail side.
Retail recreational marijuana is on hold, is my understanding, I mean, I don't know more than I read in the newspapers, but.
Right, until the state gets, gets everything together. But she's saying that meanwhile, some of these people are gonna start hitting the towns to get one step ahead, you know, what do I need? And when there's nothing in place, it's, should go pretty simply, is that there for us to say no?
Well, I know in the Portland area, there's a shortage of warehouse space, because people have already granted them up in anticipation for these large growth facilities.
And Donald Trump will come in and say, the federal level, we're gonna enforce the law.
Well, that's, that's my stance.
Yeah, which, which is gonna, you know.
That's my stance, and I mentioned that too, or, you know, as far as I can sense, still federal law. She says what the feds have done now is, they've let it up to the individual states that have okayed it. So in other words, wash my hands of this.
But again, they may change their mind, at the business risk and the, how the, these people wanna pursue it to the state level, it's a business risk.
Might be only gonna see the feds come in now is if they see big dollars.
I don't know.
It would, yeah, I don't know.
You never know what Donald Trump's gonna do.
From watching Northwood's Law, about anything this new law is gonna do, put the ordinance out of business, because we watched that thing about every other episode, have some, you know, look for a gross site.
Yeah, I know, it's true. Well, yeah, the growth rates have been around for a long time.
Anyway, just something to think about.
There was one on, in our field when we first bought it.
Yeah, I think that.
I, I, I had hired Morris Charles at Bush Hogg, cause I hadn't been to Bush Hogg for a long, long time, and, and, and he's mowing over there, and he comes over to our house, he says, are those yours? And I go, what are mine? He brought me over there, it wasn't very large, but it was.
Find a lot growing at the trench bank, behind the, uh, the plazas, where we had a snow dump.
Oh, really?
Well, call the snow out there and dump it, and come sprain the seeds of there.
You know where else? Municipal sewage treatment plant, sludge landfills.
Yep.
Meadows, squash, marijuana.
Maybe we'll find some on the front lawn this year from that stuff that they're doing.
Better keep mowing it.
Well, Roger, thank.
No, that's yours, Rich.
Rich, uh, yeah, George and I were here for the selected meeting, and they talked about a Shoreland commercial review, and nobody here talked against it or anything, so.
At least we didn't get Mr. What's-his-name, now that he would decide.
Yeah, that's the, that's the judge in Atlanta, so.
That's good. So next week, Tuesday is the select person's meeting, right? Next Tuesday? Uh, not that the planning board has any topics there, but there is a meeting. Wednesday, Danny said there's a meet the, meet the candidates.
Is that's here?
Yeah. So for anybody interested in attending either one, no, no planning board business, it's just a citizen, so just in the know. Anything else from the town?
I had a little wife done that, cause she's seriously talking about running for select person.
Who?
My wife.
All right, anything else, Clay?
Yeah, getting one battery in my car up there.
We're done, nine eighteen. Thanks, everybody, appreciate your time.
Peter, by the way, that was a nice write-up you had in the town.